With the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Let you bag your heads with me. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you that we get to be in a place and, and Lord, do your will because we know that according to Romans, you put everyone in authority. And we're here to do your will on this earth. We're here to bring heaven to earth, Father. And I pray for this meeting tonight. I pray for every person involved. I pray for this council, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, Father, that you would give them peace about every decision they have to make, Lord, that you would be with this community and you'd continue to guide us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of July 18th. Are there any public comments? I don't believe so. We have in a consent agenda, item, just item A, which is the approval of Public Works Authority Meeting of July 2nd. So move second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of July 2nd. Item number four has been withdrawn for future information. That being the last item on our Public Works Authority Meeting. It is adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of July 16th. Consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of our city council meeting minutes of June 18th, and B is the approval of city council meeting of July 2nd. So move. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the minutes of June 18th and July 2nd. Item number three and four. Item number three, we've discussed in workshop and approved a 90-day timeline for shoring up the building at 121 East Oklahoma. So that's no action necessary at this time. Number four, no action necessary at this time. Item number five is reading of the 2020 Census Support Proclamation, which I will do in a second, and presentation by Tricia Earwood Woodward.
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 Earwood.
Tricia, you gonna sing?
Where?
You wanna sing?
That would put you on the spot.
Sing us a song.
Come on up here, I should do a duet.
This'll be really special.
I didn't say nothing.
I'm singing nothing. Okay, I have the proclamation here. 2020 Census Support Proclamation. Whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and is used to make decisions concerning business growth and housing needs. And whereas the city of Guthrie, mayor and the city council recognize the importance and value of counting each and every resident in the 2020 census, and whereas the 2020 census creates jobs to stimulate economic growth and increase employment opportunities within our community, and whereas the city of Guthrie has agreed to enter a partnership with the U.S. Bureau of Census, and the city's primary role in that partnership is to formulate a complete count committee, which would include, but not be limited to, following representation: government, education, media, religious, business, and special housing. And whereas the overall goal of the committee is to make residents aware of the meaning and extreme importance of the census, and whereas more than $300 billion per year in federal and state funding, $300 billion per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and committees and communities, and whereas census data is needed to ensure fair congressional representation to determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is also necessary for redistricting the state legislature, county, and city officials and voting districts. And now therefore, I, Stephen J. Gettling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby designate and proclaim the city in the city of Guthrie, Oklahoma, is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in the 2020 census. And I sign that today. Tricia, could you make any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and the city of Guthrie. I am very pleased that I came to Guthrie and met with your city manager, Mr. Alsop, and Dan, and was it Kim?
Mm-hmm.
And Kim. It was a very warm and hospitable meeting, and they understand the importance of the census, as you have indicated here in your proclamation. My main purpose of being hired is not to get you to fill out your census form because you understand. You're elected officials, you're trusted voices, you are, you have stakeholder interests in your community. But my purpose is to get you to identify those persons in your community who are hard to count. They may be homeless, they may be apartment dwellers, they may be immigrants, documented or undocumented. The census wants to count everyone because each person brings in a portion of those federal dollars that's allocated. So we need to count them. So as a complete count committee, you're the trusted voice, and there are persons in the community who may not understand why we want the information, the Census Bureau. Congress mandated it since 1790, and so every 10 years, we count the residents that are in our country. Because whether or not you are documented or you're an immigrant, you use our services, the roads, our health systems, our fire department, our police offices. And so by bringing, by counting everyone, then we get our share of the dollars. Guthrie may not get the exact amount that they would like to have, but when the state of Oklahoma gets the exact amount based on the number that our president receives in December of 2020, and he releases that information in January of 2021, then you can apply for grants, be block grants or community development corporations, senior citizen daycare. So... I'm excited to be here. I want to let you know that this is not my first rodeo. I did it in 2000, and I did it again in 2010. Now, I wasn't here in Oklahoma because I heard that the complete count committee was not established in Oklahoma City. That's what a previous partnership specialist told me. Well, I trained them back in January. And he said, and the number of persons that turned out to participate was overwhelming based on what he said. But for me, because I had done it before, I expected that. I expected people to show up because you have an interest in your community, and this is an important thing. So when we, when you decide who the trusted voices are, the stakeholders, the religious leaders, that you would like to participate, and we ask that you do not exclude anyone, invite everyone that you think that might want to participate, but those who show up for the meeting is who we will train. We will train you based on what the census knows what happened in the past. Then you take the rein because it's your wagon train or horses. I love horses, okay? So I have been blessed to be here in Oklahoma because I've been to Broken Bow, Broken Arrow.
Everything's broken here.
Altis, Alva last night. All those, because I was the only one here for 13 months. But I said, like, I'll tell you what I told them last night. There's only so much a little old lady can do. So we have hired seven more partnership specialists, and we plan to hire up to 16 because this is a large state, and we want to make sure that everyone's counted once and only once in the right place. So we have, when we train you, we will tell you the various phases that we have, the group quarters, the homeless. We have a special night to count people who are homeless, the soup kitchens. But everything is confidential. For 72 years, the only thing that the census will release to the public are the numbers. Now, if you want to know where your grandmother lived 72 years ago, we can tell you that because that's what's available. That's how the genealogy can research for you. Census data. We have over 100 surveys going around your community. So traffic. Al Roca says this storm is going to affect 8 million people. And how does he know that? Census data. So to keep our dollars in Oklahoma or to bring them back, so to speak, this is your tax refund, okay? If you feel yours, and it's going to be easy, safe, and confidential because I've sworn on my life, for life, that I will not share the information. And they said, well, that's fine, but if you do share it, we're going to charge you $250,000 and place you in jail for five years. That's not happening. And so we want you as trusted voices to join us because you are the ambassador, each one of you. You're trusted, you were elected, and so you can tell them, you can educate your populace that it's important, it's safe, and it's necessary. So if any of you have any questions... Oh, did I say thank you for this? Thank you so very much. I want to tell you that we put it in the Dallas office. In December last year, I turned in 16 proclamations from cities in Oklahoma, and no one else had done that. So they were so impressed, they're putting them on the wall at the Dallas Regional Office. So this will be sent there too, and I'm, this is probably my 20-something. I'm just...
Very good, very good. We just want a gold frame on that.
Yes. And I'll send you a picture of it. But are there any questions? Well, thank you again, Mayor and council members. I'm gonna get on my horses and mosey on back up the road or down the road.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Appreciate that. We take this responsibility very seriously. It's important for our citizens, for our community, to have as accurate a census data as possible. So we're, we will be a great partner.
All right. I'm looking forward to training you.
Okay.
Okay, and it won't take that long, and I'll make it fun.
Good. That means you're gonna sing?
Yeah. I'll promise you, I'll sing.
All right, all right, good. Thank you very much.
May bring a bridal.
Item number six on our agenda is, we have actually an amendment to it. Discussion, possible action to approve the purchase only of the Ferris lawn mowers is the amended motion. We take off the pickup. I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to hear him talk?
I'm sorry.
I don't think Tenny will mind.
Tenny. I didn't want to steal your thunder. Go ahead.
Move right ahead if you want to.
No, you tell us why we need these lawn mowers.
Staff's asking to purchase. We've went, we've bid, I say we bid, we gathered quotes from three different vendors. O'Connor's, Great Plains, and John Deere, P&amp;K. O'Connor's, we've got a 36-inch mower we're requesting. This mower is utilized out at our cemeteries, edging in around all of our tombstones. Great Plains, the smallest thing they had at the time was a 42-inch that they is able to quote to us. It was not a commercial mower. P&amp;K quoted a 36-inch to us as well. Prices for those, as you have in your packets, O'Connor's was $5,249.99. The 42-inch non-commercial mower, which is a larger-scale mower than we originally are looking for, came in at $39.69. You can see it's a lot cheaper. That's from it not being commercial. The 36-inch from P&amp;K came in at $6,536.53 with your lower bid being O'Connor. 61-inch mower we bid from O'Connor's came in at $8,499.99. A 60-inch from Great Plains, which is a Kubota mower, came in at, there's two of them. There's a gas engine and a diesel engine mower there. One came in at $10,999 and one at $15,065.92. The John Deere P&amp;K 60-inch was $11,845.68. Again, O'Connor's, the Ferris mower, was the cheaper of the mowers. So, and that is Verdel's preference, the Ferris mowers. He runs all these mowers. The Ferris is what he's had the best luck with. He claims is the more comfortable ride for the guys out on the roadsides and everything as well. He brags a lot about the suspension. I don't know whether it's just the rougher roadsides and that suspension, but it's friendlier to the guys. The 72-inch mower from O'Connor's came in at $11,899.99. The 72-inch from, which is a Kubota mower from Great Plains, came in, again, a gas engine and a diesel engine motor, $15,784.58, and the diesel was at $28,000, or $20,366.03. P&amp;K 72-inch was $12,261.48, and a diesel engine was $19,549.53. So you can see that these things are pricey that we're using. It's not, they're not your average lawn mowers that you see mowing your yards and things like that. They're, they're the commercial mowers. They're heavier built, they've got the heavier gauge steel on the decks. That's kind of the difference in the machines that we're looking at versus what we see at your Lowe's and things like that. On the funding on this, this funding is coming from some of the personnel accounts where we've been down personnel throughout the entire year. So we were able to kind of gather some of them funds together to hopefully give us a little bit of a shot in the arm when we start looking at CIP down the road.
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? All right, submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to purchase those three Ferris lawn mowers. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to approve a contract amending the advanced data processing services for Medicare and Medicaid. Chief?
Yep, thank you. This is kind of the culmination of about a two-and-a-half-year project that our department's been working hand-in-hand with former Senator Griffin when she was in office, trying to get this amendment pushed through with the state. About four, five years ago, the federal government started a new program called the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Reimbursement Act. Each state had to amend their Medicaid plan to allow this to occur in their individual state. The Oklahoma Healthcare Authority, which administers Medicaid in the state of Oklahoma, refused to do any amendments unless instructed to by the legislature. So the Oklahoma State Firefighters Association and the Oklahoma Ambulance Association worked with the legislators to draft a bill or include it in an already drafted bill to force the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority to do their plan amendment to the Federal Center for Medicare and Medicare Services. That was completed literally the last week of the 2018 legislative session, which you guys can remember the teacher strike was going on, and how we got something pushed through like that, we still don't know. But it's been pushed through. The plan amendment has been approved by the federal government. Everything is active and ready to go, and they are literally ready to start this process of submitting for supplemental reimbursements within this last quarter of the fiscal year. So we should not receive any money before the beginning of next fiscal year, but this contract amendment allows our billing provider, Intermedix, to use their consulting partner, which is Public Consulting Group, who, by the way, also helped us in drafting some of this plan amendment language with the healthcare authorities so they know the program in and out. And their initial goal for our department is about another $175,000 a year in supplemental funding that we should receive. One caveat to this program is it's basically some cost justification reportings. And I know the meeting where we discussed the outstanding ambulance billing numbers, Councilman Long had asked the question about what our true costs were to provide ambulance service, and some of these reports will actually help us cull some of the data necessary to show our actual costs. So it's kind of got a double benefit for us.
Is this retroactive in any way, chief?
Yes, it actually will be. Sometimes this federal fiscal year that we are in right now, they haven't told us exactly how far they're going to go back. So we don't have a definitive date on that yet.
Okay.
But from what they have told us, we will not see any money in hand until sometime post-October 1 of this year.
All right. Questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion then to move with this contract. So move second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the contract amendment with the advanced data processing for the billing of Medicare/Medicaid. Item number eight is discussion, possible action to approve Resolution 2019-14, preapproving a FAA grant. Shalane, you want to tell us a little bit about this?
So the FAA has received a grant application for design-only to rehabilitate our terminal apron. When this city receives that grant application or grant agreement back from the FAA, it will likely have to be returned back to the FAA within a short timeframe. So by allowing it to be preapproved now, well, it'll avoid having a special meeting, you know, us having to call a special meeting together. The FAA grant will be in the amount of $60,390, and the city's matching share is going to be $6,710, which will be split with the city of Edmond.
So ours is just a little over $3,000?
Correct.
This will replace the old apron that's already out there?
I'm sorry?
Is it on this apron?
Yes. Right in the front of the terminal building, plus another portion that's just to the west of it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the Resolution 2019-14, preapproval of the FAA grant. Item number nine then is the follow-up to that.
So the city has applied for the design-only grant, as you know, for fiscal year 2019. The amendment number five, which was approved by the city council back in December of 2018, included services to be performed by the airport engineer, which is CEC. Those services included an update to the DBE goal, and recently, the FAA Office of Civil Rights determined, due to the age of the city's DBE program, it must be updated in addition to that DBE goal. So the cost of the update's going to be $5,000.
Okay. Any questions? That our share, or is that Edmond paying part of that, or is that?
That, that will be, 90% of it will be paid by the FAA, so our share will be 500, which will be split between the two cities.
5,000. So move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with that FAA grant for the terminal apron. Item number 10, discussion, possible action to confirm mayor's nomination of Cheryl Paget to the Guthrie Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we had one opening on the planning commission. Unfortunately, as you know, Vern Ogden had passed away, which created our open position. We had received one application from Cheryl Paget. It would be to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ogden, so her term would end 31 March of 2020. Staff feels that she's more than a qualified candidate, so would like to see that the nomination go through for Cheryl.
So moved. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit the votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. We have with us five, no, six. Six to one vote in favor of Cheryl Paget move to the, as a position on the Guthrie Planning Commission. Item number 11, discussion, possible action to confirm mayor's nomination of Terrell Shawn Davis to fill vacancy at large for the Convention and Visitors Bureau through September. That's when the vacancy of the person that he would be filling that, that spot ends. But then, since it's so close, the nomination is also to extend that to the normal three-year term ending September 30, 2022.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit the votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of, of Terrell Shawn Davis to the CVB. Item number 12, discussion, possible action regarding city's purchase and issuance of police department ammunition. Chief?
I broke his glue.
Uh-oh.
All right. Last, last city council meeting, Councilman Channel asked that we discuss the ammunition purchasing for the police department. So the last couple of weeks, staff has spent a large amount of time compiling data to hopefully give you an answer and maybe for you to give us some guidance. We attached several attachments to your packet. I'll walk through those real quick. Attachment number one shows ammunition and firearm accessory purchases for fiscal year 16 through today. Attachment two, it's the same, it's a, it's the same document with notes on exactly what firearms and accessories were purchased outside of the ammunition. Attachment three shows the types, a number of ammunition purchases for fiscal year 16 through today. Attachment four, we wanted to compare how we stand in relation to other very similar cities. The cities that were chosen were, are all participants in OML that have a population between 10,000 and 16,000, and all of them operate under collective bargaining agreement, the union. Talakwa is probably, after talking to Talakwa, they are probably, I don't know, an anomaly. They have an elected chief, and so elected chiefs and budgets are different, but I left it in there for you all to consider. The mean budget of all of the departments that submitted returns are, is $17,643. The median budget is $20,000, and the mode budget is $20,000. None of the other departments that were surveyed have SWAT teams, less lethal, and semunition. Some have one or the other, but none of them have all three like we do. We issue the second most, or yeah, the second most pistol ammunition. Elk City issues 1,200 rounds annually to their officers. We issue 600. We issue 240 rifle rounds in a year and 120 shotgun rounds in a year. We tie with Choctaw for the highest number of manual Klick qualifications. One Klick qualification is mandatory. We do two. This was a practice that was in place before I got here. We train the most. We, we average one a month. We don't hit every month, but we sure as heck try to. None of the other places do that. That was not in place when I got here. That's something that, that I do. Attachment six contains all the invoices concerning ammunition, firearms, and accessories through fiscal year 16 to today. Or attachment five. Attachment six contains the rules that we use for ammunition and some information in regards to training and litigation. I averaged our ammunition budget for the years in question, and we averaged $20,354.16. One of the proposed, or I guess the proposed counterplan to this is to move our ammunition budget down to $9,000. budget down to $9,000 roughly. I looked, and if I have my figures right, that takes us back to about where we were You have any questions?
The the number of special teams you said is is different than the comparison of other towns.
Right. We have, we have a SWAT team we provide ammunition for, and we have less lethal, and we have semmunitions.
And the and the reason that's that makes us different is because it's different weapons that that we're using, or they have to?
It's more.
Fire more frequently?
It's it's like we, we try to average one training a month with the with the police department on firearms when we can. And the SWAT team has a training, every a two-day training every month when their schedule allows. And all of that's not firearms related, but a lot of it is firearms related and semunition related and less lethal related. So we have a, we, that's one of the reasons why we have higher numbers of purchases. We have all these people in our, or all these things that we buy ammunition for inside our budget, and we we train more than the other departments.
Crimes up in this county and the city, right?
Yes.
That answers part of it.
Well, according to the inventory, we have over 100,000 rounds.
Correct.
In the armory.
Correct.
That's enough to take care of every man, woman, and child in this city 10 times over. Why do we, what are we saving for?
The reason our our inventory is so high right now is because due to the the shortage of personnel that we had, we have not been able to do either one of our our qualifications this year. Once we get the qualifications in, that number will drop significantly.
But the qualifications for Cleet, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
That's 25 rounds?
Well, it is 25 rounds if you pass the first time. The pattern and practice of the city is to give a lot of attempts to pass.
So there's no, I read somewhere, and it might have been some of my research, they get, say, three attempts or something. Is that not the way?
That was on one of, one of, I think Choctaw does that. They get three attempts.
And it might have been, but.
Then they, then they get sent to training. If they don't make it again, then they get suspended, and probably lose their job. The last place I worked, we came up with something very similar to that in our contract. The the issue here is, at least one city manager has tried to address some stuff in in curbing the amount of ammunition that we we dole out, and it was met with with pretty good resistance by the union, because, well, because basically we tried to do it unilaterally without talking to them.
Chief, your first attachment, I think it was your first attachment, talks about some of the processes that you have for accounting for ammunition, and obviously.
Attachment six.
I'm sorry?
Attachment six.
Six, okay. And obviously, things that caught my mind is that the issuance of ammunition is not recorded, and I didn't see anything in there that reflects issuance of ammunition and versus firing of the ammunition.
Correct.
So it's potential that as a officer, I could be issued, let's just say, 50 rounds, shoot 20, and then there's 30 that are still out there someplace.
That is correct.
Is is that something that we need to look at, change?
Oh, no, it's easier.
You, did you inherit this system? And and if so, are you going to continue with it, or?
That is the system that I inherited. Typically, it is the system that is used by far and large throughout law enforcement. There are a handful of agencies that I that I know of that says, hey, there's one agency that I know of in particular, they pull out their 50 rounds, they get whatever color fingernail polish it is, they mark the heads of all the 50 rounds, and when those 50 rounds all come back, you get your next box of ammunition. You know, here, here's the deal, right? I mean, the council makes the rules. I I am more than willing to do whatever you want to do to change the rules. You give me the guidance, and that's the road we will absolutely go down. But some of these things to decide unilaterally up here, you're going to meet resistance with the union.
So you make it sound as if we don't have a choice.
You, I mean, you do have some choices, yes. Well, I mean, what do you want a choice on?
It would be subject to negotiation.
Correct. Making the decision tonight is probably not the ideal situation. My, of course, my recommendation would be to probably direct the city manager to address this in in contract negotiations, if that's where you want to go. And you might provide him with some ideas, probably in executive session or something about.
So the firing, the firing and the use of ammunition is a contract item?
No, it is absolutely not in the contract. The problem is, I've been here almost five years. It's been going on longer than that, and the union has a pretty good stance with patterns and past practices. Arbitrators typically rule against us when we.
So you're saying our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I was just going to say arbitrators typically rule against us when we just try to change past practices without negotiation with the with the collective bargaining unit.
Well, this is a policy that we're looking to establish. We're not looking to, you know, arbitrate a contract here. We're looking to set a city policy for that department.
Correct. But if it if it changes what what we've done in the past and done substantially for years in the past, we have to negotiate that with the union. All of our, all of our regular day-to-day policies, typically, we meet with the union, make sure we can all get on some solid ground, meet with the city manager to make sure he's on solid ground with it, and then we bring it to you all.
And and anything that has to do with work conditions is subject to negotiation by state law in Oklahoma. So you can make very few unilateral decisions without involving the union and negotiate. Some things are in the contract, some things are determined by past practice. Past practice, so it carries almost the same weight as being in the contract. So if you were to say, we're only going to give you three tries to qualify, and then you're out, that would be changing the work conditions, and it would be subject to negotiation.
But how much ammunition we let them pop off is not a working condition.
We'll let the arbitrator discuss that with you.
Okay.
Well, the same situation occurred. I mean, I talked to you a little bit about why we don't standardize our our caliber so that we've got a little bit better buying power, maybe. And that falls into the same category, because we've allowed this, and it was that way before you came here.
Correct.
Because we've allowed this so long, now it's standard practice.
Right. I mean, it's not written down, but I mean, if if the union wants, has, takes an issue with it, we we're going to go to arbitration, and we're probably going to lose.
In 16, our budget was $13,000. From 16 to 19, it's over doubled. I'm here to make sure that don't become standard practice.
That's perfectly acceptable.
The chief.
The price of bullets are going up. Nothing's cheap anymore. I already know that. You know, you put them on truck and ship them in here, everything's going up.
Most, most handgun ammunition is under 30 cents a round. 223 ammunition is 30 cents a round. Shotgun ammunition is 40 cents a round.
I know, but.
You can go right down the street over here and buy it for 16 cents a round. Winchester.
But when the government gets involved in anything, we already know that it's going to get out of hand.
This isn't the government.
Well, yeah, it is. It is the government.
Chief, your comments, when you were listing listing off other comparable police departments, cities, their mean cost was 19,000, the mode and the median was 20.
Mean is 17,643.
Okay. And and ours is, you said our average was 20,000, and that's over how long?
Our average.
Over how many years?
Four years.
Four years. I missed that. Okay. So from that perspective, doesn't look like we're out of, out of line from that perspective.
I've got another perspective to show you, though.
Correct.
There was a comment down here. James?
Well, I was curious, when you were gathering your means and your medians, was was Guthrie included in that, or did you exclude them as you were doing your averages?
No, Guthries are included in that.
Okay.
There's, there's seven of them, including us.
Okay. All right. Other questions of the chief?
I'll be here all night if you need me.
We have anything else? You've got?
Yes.
Did you want to make this presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Don.
Okay. That first one's pretty self-explanatory. I researched a lot of it, if I can get it. There we go. This chart, I tried to get, you know, Logan County Sheriff, of course, they're three blocks away. They patrol the same streets, more streets in the same area. Chickasha and Oklahoma Highway Patrol. Last number I had of officers was 28 here. Logan County's about the same. Chickasha's about the same, and OHP has 800 officers. I'll just start with OHP since they're the big one. Theirs runs around $130,000 per year, and that does include targets. Chickasha runs 5880. That's for a full year. And Logan County Sheriff, their their fiscal budget just, or fiscal year just ended in July, they spent 8661. Guthrie is nine months into this, and we're at 282. Now, there's a disclaimer on that 282. I started this, and then there was $1,600 that was magazines and some accessories. So the actual number there on Guthrie's total dollars is like roughly 266, just thinking off the top of my head. That's where we're at after nine months. That's not a full year. Going back to OHP, that figures out $163 per officer. And OHP, I would say, probably has all of the, you know, we said there's two or three different kinds of ammunition and things that we need. I figure OHP has the tactical teams and probably just about every kind of weapon that you could imagine, and they do it for $163 per trooper. Chickasha does it for $210 per officer. Logan County, when you divide that out, they did it for $309 per officer. And Guthrie is, like I say, this is just for nine months, but we're at $1,007 per officer. And then when you break that down, average 30 cents a round, Jeff, that's where I was getting that, because handgun, you can go down the street here to Terry's and buy it for 16 cents a round on 9mm right now. But I did 30 because shotguns are around 40. 223 is around 30 cents. That's what the highway patrol pays for it. And then the handgun is cheaper than 30, so I think 30 is a fair average. But rounds per officer, OHP, they get about 400 per trooper, and Chickasha gets 700. And Logan County Sheriff, they had 962 for officer. And Guthrie comes out at 3,357 rounds per officer. So talking about your perspective and your average, that's where we we rate up with these four departments. I did the OHP because a lot of people consider them the top law enforcement in the state. Logan County's over here three blocks away, doing the same thing that our guys are doing, and this is what they spend to do it. Cushing, I did talk to them. They don't give them anything. They said they replace our bullet if we use it on on duty. That's what they get. But it was one that I polled, so it's in there. We spend more money per officer than any other department surveyed, and we're spending more money on ammunition than the Logan County Sheriff's Department by approximately $20,000 a year. Like I stated earlier, in 16, our budget, our expenditures was $13,000. Now we're up over double that just since 16. So that's the reason I'm trying to address this here. You know, that $20,000 can be spent, to me, a lot of other places other than popping it up on the range. I'm, you know, I'm for the guys having what they need, and I'm not trying to clip their wings, but, you know, when you get, when we have machine pistols, we have no business with machine pistols. We have 15,000 rounds of 9mm. Yes, there's officers that carry that, but a lot of that goes through those machine pistols that we have no business owning to begin with. That's for the military. The solution that I'm proposing is a yearly budget cap on ammunition. Make that our policy. And the way I come to the, what I come to, a lot of these places, like the chief said, the officers get a box of ammunition per officer per month. That figures out 600 rounds. 100 rounds per officer for qualifying. Cleet qualifying is 25 rounds. So that's enough to cover their ammunition for court, for for qualifications. Or say they make it the first time on handgun, but they want to use some rounds for rifle or shotgun or whatever. I think it's a fair amount. And then since we're at 700 rounds, if we include another 300 rounds per officer for shotgun, rifle, practice, whatever it is they want to use it on, and I'm not, I want to explain here, there's, in these departments that I polled, they will have a core of officers that's, you know, maybe five or six of them where they're really into guns and shooting, and they they want their ammo. But there's also officers that they shoot to keep current, but they have other interests, whether it's going to the lake or whatever, you know, their hobby is something different. So some of the offers, officers don't even claim what they are allotted. And I'm not saying, when I say one box of ammunition per officer per month, I'm, if you've got five guys that want to burn more than that, and you've got another one that says, I'm good with a box every once in a while, I'm not interested in getting into that. Those numbers are just to explain how I come up with these figures. Anyway, that's a grand total of 1,000 rounds in a year. 30 cents per round, per officer, comes out to $300 per officer. So if you have 30 officers, your budget for for ammunition would be $9,000. And for setting an amount per officer, if you have more officers, it can go up without any hassle. It can go down as we don't have have officers if we're low. And it's going to save us around $20,000 a year, and it's comparable to everything in our area. And, you know, if you look at the highway patrol's budget, what I'm talking about here is pretty much double what the troopers get. Now, the union can get bent out of shape over it, but is the union going, we're eight times worse than the highway patrol, so we need that many more bullets? It's, doesn't really make any sense. So that's my explanation on it, and what I would like to do is propose that as a solution as far as, you know, making that a policy for, you know, making a motion and adopting that for a policy. When I, you know, it's what I do for a living. I find the problem, I find what's causing the problem, and I also try to come up with a solution. This is what I came up with. Is it the only thing? No. But when I propose a problem, I want to propose some sort of a solution. So if anybody has any questions on what I came up with or anything needs explained better, go right ahead.
I have, I have some comments whenever it's appropriate.
Okay. Questions by the council? Don, good presentation. Obviously, one of the, one of the challenges that that you reflect, reflect there, you're reflecting one year, or in one case, nine months of data, and averages could change, whether you're you're stockpiling or not stockpiling. When you've got 1,000 pieces of ammo in your inventory now, you would think, for instance, now, we're not going to be buying a whole lot. So a one-year snapshot can, could be skewed. So, a one-year snapshot can, could be skewed. And I think the chief's presentation was talking about a four-year average. I think gives a better, you know, a better total picture.
It is, but if you look at the, and I didn't put it in here, I could have. But if you look back, it hasn't varied much the past two or three years. It kind of took a big jump from '16 when it was at 13,000. And it jumped up, and it's been...
Well, we just heard that four years, it's averaged 20.
No. If you, if you look in the packet...
Well, I don't know. That's what the chief reported.
Right. Well, I know, I know if you look at the packet, the information that he gave us, if you read that, that's what it's been. Because the one, the one year that was down was 13. That's going to knock the average down for those others that were, say, 24, or 23, or 25, whatever they were.
Sure. Yeah. Other, other questions or comments?
I would like to say some. I applaud Councilman Channel's keen interest in these issues, such as the fire department's ambulance collection rates, as well as the police department's ammunition, ammunition usage. We've had some interesting presentations on these issues. But I think we need to pause and take notice of the fact that these requests are coming from an individual council member. And they're tasking our city staff to take a considerable amount of time to formally present the research to answer the questions posed to them. I wouldn't be surprised if this took you over 40 hours and your staff to put this together. And I'm always very appreciative of how well it's done, but I am also very aware of that. But it's been my observation in practice that when I have a question about something like this, and again, I'm not saying these aren't valid concerns or good questions. But I've found that an informal visit with the city manager usually provides me with an adequate answer to my concerns. And what I'm really trying to say is that I think we need to more, be more careful about requesting too many of these kinds of things, these kinds of presentations that take a lot of staff man-hours to put together, costing the use of staff's time, opportunity cost for those people to be doing something better for our community than looking up how much they spent on bullets and things like that. If I, as an individual, have such a question, I think it's perfectly good for me to go in and have a talk with the city manager and find out what the answers are. And if something comes out of that meeting that needs to be elevated to the city council, I'm going to leave that up to the city manager to make that decision at first. If he doesn't do it, then I'll probably bring it up. But I'm going to leave that in the city manager's hands. But we, as a council, when we have a question like this, I think the actual request needs to be voted on and approved by a majority of the council, taking into consideration the staff's time that we're calling on them to do this kind of stuff and weighing that. I think sometimes it's possible to get our answers to our questions in an informational email. We don't even have to have these long, drawn-out presentations that take, I don't know how many hours you spend on that to get that, to get your data for that. But it's not really that necessary. But we can't get into the business of micromanaging the staff. And that's what it looks like to me that we're doing. We have department heads, and we have a city manager, and that's what we pay them to do their jobs.
Sir, it's not micromanagement. I was elected by the people to come up here and see to it that we do the best we can. Mr. Taylor, do you have a problem?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead and say it.
No, the problem is you two.
Gentlemen, 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 let's take a second.
I was, I am doing what I was elected by the people to come up here and do. I'm seeing to it that we do the best with what we have, and we get the most for our buck, and we make it go as far as it is. I'm sorry that you assume this is frivolous and time-wasting, but I guarantee you, there's a whole bunch of people that voted to put me in here that is glad I'm trying to lose $20,000. Mr. Taylor, if you would like to put $20,000 in the kitty, we'll make this go away right now.
No.
Yeah, I'm worried about it. We'll stop right there.
Okay. I don't think anybody said it was frivolous.
Well, it was pretty much implied.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment? City manager, I know, wanted to make a few comments.
Yep. Mr. Channel would go back to his second slide.
Okay.
Can we dim the lights?
Yes, ma'am. That, the next, that one. Okay. As, as indicated, as background information, as you look at that slide, if you take the four-year average, we've spent just over $20,000, $20,300 for the last four years as an average. That average is $726 per officer, not 1,000 if you look at the average. In rounds of ammo, of all the various type, we have bought 181,000 rounds. That average is 45,000 a year. And that's 1,600 rounds of ammo, not 3,300. So, to some degree, I think this chart is oversimplified and somewhat inflated by just looking at one year and not looking at the average. I duly, do truly appreciate Mr. Channel raising questions. He does read all the background information we provide him, even does his own independent research. I do question that we're trying to compare a municipality, the sheriff's office, and state agencies because I believe they're different operations. I think it's also reasonable to utilize other municipal agencies of similar size and characteristics for comparative purposes. But I don't think as a budgeting tool, we want to set our standard by Chickasha or any other community. We should budget for our needs, not Chickasha's needs. The, some of the conclusions that I have, if you only look at one year, as Barry indicated, it could be skewed. You could be looking at a situation where a community had stockpiled a year before, and you happen to pick the year they're down because they're buying less bullets that year. Could be that because of the number of turnovers that we have and recertifying new officers may put more demand on the number of bullets that we use. So, if you only look at one year, the numbers get skewed. But if, if you go down through there, Mr. Channel says 28,200. If you use the average for the four years, 20,000, then that's overstating it by almost $8,000. The average spent per officer, on the average, it's been 726. That chart shows 1,000, so that's overstating it by almost 300. If you look at rounds per officer, 3,357. If you look at the rounds that we bought of all the different types of animals, ammo, and divide it by the four years, and the number of officers is only 1,617, that's almost half of what the number is on that chart. Finally...
In all respect, I did a year. I didn't do a four-year average.
I understand, and I'm not being...
It's pretty easy to beat up one year when you're wanting to compare four-year averages.
I understand.
I did a chart on the current year from all of the cities.
And, and I'm just trying to point out the difference if you use average. I'm not trying to attack you or anything, but, but let me finish if you would. Then, if you compare us to other communities, of course, Mr. Channel picked Chickasha, 5,880. But when we looked at other communities, like Weatherford's 23,000. Chalkos 20,000. Durant's 20,000. Elk City's 15,000. Miami's lower, eight. Talakual, who has elected chief, is six. So, Mr. Channel happened to pick the lowest one of all of the, of the ones. It's not, you know, if he'd have put 20,000 in and compared this Weatherford...
I did this research before yours even came to me.
I understand. So, you know, I think that Mr. Channel's made some good points. And I think, can we probably do a better job of controlling the use of ammo? I agree, yes. Do we want, do we need a written policy on the use, storage, and handling of ammunition? Yes, I agree with you there. I just don't want us to see, you've raised some good points. I just don't want us to do a knee-jerk reaction over one look at this and try to set a limit without exploring it some more and giving staff time to look at some written policies, some standards, work with our union, and come back at a later date with something to propose.
My opinion on that, staff's been here for four or five years. Staff had time to put that where he wants it. If he hadn't changed it, then he agrees with it. So, he's not looking to do anything about it.
Maybe we're asking him to.
I'm just pointing out the obvious.
Any other comments by the council?
Well, I, I think in what Don was attempting to do here was trying to put together other offices with similar-sized staff. Some of those other communities that you rattled off had communities that were much larger in community numbers, right? I mean, 15,000, we're not a community of 15,000?
We're 12.
Okay. I mean, these were 28 officers. I don't, I don't know how that would be. Chickasha would be so much more different than if you were picking communities that had much larger, or, or larger numbers.
I think Chickasha's more than 15,000.
Okay.
Chickasha has 21,000 population, and they have 28 officers.
So, I don't think you can argue he picked a similar-sized community.
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't know that necessarily all the ones that were rattled off there were also in, in similar, was all similar size. I was trying to go back and look, but I, I can't find it.
Larry, I think we can take this under advisement. I know Don has worked hard on this, and we all have different opinions. But we're not a negotiating committee with the union. We're, Don brought numbers to us, and we have other numbers. I'm proud of Don about the thing, but I, I think that we're going to have to go into this a little deeper and find out what the chief has to say about things, and what the city manager, what kind of conclusions we can come to. And we all need to take a deep breath over this issue and try and come back at a later time with more information. Demeaning each other will not get us anywhere. So, you got to respect the man for who he is or who they are. Snow won't hunt us, for heaven's sake. So, we need to sit down, put it together, put it on the city manager, come with Don. You get us some information, deal with the union. Guys, we're going to have to deal with fire, police, union. That's just the way it is. They, they do have consideration in this community. So, I don't know that I have, I guess I have a motion to put this and put all of our information together, using Don's and cross-sections and everything. I don't think this is the time or place to make a decision.
So, your motion is what?
Well, my motion is to take a deep breath. And my second motion is to take it back to the city manager, taking Don's information, taking the information the chief has and that the union brings because we do have to deal with them to a point, and see if we can't find a solution to this. But I'd like to just table this conversation until we get some information.
So, table it until we can get combined information.
I think we need a timeline. I mean, we were all on Carol for having timelines. I think we should have a timeline on this.
Do you propose a timeline?
City manager, do you oppose it? Do you have a timeline?
Well, it kind of depends on Carol's project. We were talking about one item, one project. I've got a list of probably 25 projects ongoing on my desk right now, and every other department does. We're working with industry. So, you know, if you all want me to focus on this and, and not the other projects that might be important, it's one timeline. But if we're going to work it in with some other things, I think it's something we got to go through a cycle of negotiations with the department. I, I think you're looking at six months out.
Chief?
I was just going to say, we are, we are in the middle right now, putting our, our budgets together for October 1. And whether, I mean, the city manager says it'll probably be six months out to work with, with all the players in hand, and that's probably very true. But I think you all are going to have a lot of control when you look at my ammunition line item budget in August. Was that when? Yeah, in August. So, I mean, if it goes up to $36,000, you all are going to have some say over that. If it drops down, you all can address it accordingly.
Back to you, Councilman Bercher. Since you made the motion, you want to put a, within six months on it? Or you want to put beginning of the next fiscal year?
I know the city manager business is a one-legged, dog-and-butt-kicking contest, but I think with...
One-legged dog?
Can we look at three months? Is that...
You're the man, you're the man making the, the motion.
Well, is there anybody behind me?
Not yet.
I, I think we make an effort three months to come to a conclusion. When does negotiations, chief?
Right now.
This is not a negotiation. Oh, y'all are in the, are you in the process now?
Chief, did you say you'd have a budget in August? Is that correct?
My department and all the other departments will, will have our budgets together. And, and last I talked to Kim, is, is we are going to meet in August, and you all will get to see it in August. I mean, the complete budget, so you can, you can find account 70, which is police, and go find my ammunition line item. And if nothing else, you're going to be able to see the money that's spent there. And if you don't like the money that's being sent there, you can send it back.
I think that's what I tried to do. I saw what's being spent. I went after it, and I'm trying to address it. And while we're speaking about timelines, I have a deal, another policy that we were going to look at in a later date. I've been into this deal before, and it's 27 months, and we still haven't got that one done. So, I think that's kind of the way, reason we're looking for a timeline because things have a way of falling through the cracks.
Correct. This, this one cannot fall through the cracks. You will have to either...
So, we're talking, right now, right now, the proposal is to table this for three months to collect more data, evaluate, have more dialogue.
That's where I'm at, three months. And if the city manager makes that happen, well, I'll have somebody buying breakfast, but it won't be me.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Time's for lack of a second?
I'll second it.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. For two, for it, and four, I'm sorry, five against, the motion is denied, fails.
Mark that down. I learned my lesson.
And I think chief's point is well-taken. We'll have an opportunity to see it at retreat, and we're looking at the, at the budgets for all the departments. And, and also, the, the impact that the negotiations, contract negotiations with the union also plays into it. It's not just a, just, not just a financial decision. Okay. Item, item number 13, city manager report.
I believe there's a mouse. Let's go come this way. Get the cat. Get the cat, get the cat. Is that the first slide, Justin? That's it. I thought we missed first one. In the name of transparency, I just wanted to do a public report. We did a inventory of our evidence room in the police department. I believe the evidence room inventory's been in question well over decade, maybe two decades. The environment was and, and has been... The environment was and, and has been ripe for rumors on what might be missing, what, what might be down there. In today's environment, I believe internal staff were reluctant to tackle the issue for fear of being blamed if an updated inventory showed discrepancies. There have been prior efforts in the last 10 years to use outside individuals and entities to do this inventory. Two separate county sheriffs were approached about performing inventory so that it would be done by an outside entity. Of course, they both declined due to the massive undertaking. And prior city managers have explored budgeting funds to hire an outside entity to perform the inventory, but then due to a variety of probably sound reasons at the time, the funds were never budgeted to hire somebody from outside to do it. Mouse seems to be working different, and there we go. The inventory was initiated in December of 2018. It was completed in June 4 of 2019. And even once we initiated in December of 2018 and we were committed to do it, it was not easy to find someone from the outside to do it. We first visited with a law firm recommended to us that deals with police and legal issues, and they looked at it and said it was too much. They didn't want to get involved, so then we had to go to a second entity. But at this point, all property, which is a list of 268 pages currently in the proper room, property room, was inventoried with description, location, correctly entered into the department's evidence, logging, software, Otis. All property was properly tagged. Property associated with inactive cases where property is no longer needed for evidence or seized property subject to proper disposition was identified. The inventory was conducted by a firm called Civil Rights Training and Consultants. The owner is Ken McNair, and Mr. McNair was assisted by Sergeant Thorne, I believe, maybe Lieutenant Thorne now if I'm correct, but at the time, I think it was still sergeant. Background on Mr. McNair, he has a bachelor's of arts in criminal justice. He has a pretty extensive law career, starting in 1964, 20 years with the Midwest City Police Department going forward through 2014. So he's someone with quite a bit of experience. This is the appearance of the evidence room before the inventory, the inventory to give you some idea of the massive undertaking and, and why it was difficult to do the inventory and keep everything up to date. This is a picture after the inventory, so you can see that it's much more organized and it's going to be easier moving forward. This is the amount of material that involves inactive cases where property is no longer needed for evidence or seized, property subject to proper disposition. So when we go through the process and get rid of it, it's going to make it much easier moving forward in the future. There were discrepancies found, many of which have already been addressed. There was, for years, a rumor there was a handgun missing, and it was a Taurus. It was a Kies back in 2013. It was just a matter of one place having the record that didn't get back with the evidence. In a short period of time, we resolved that matter. We found the executed property lease affidavit dated in 2013 where that gun was returned to the owner. Cash not initially accounted for, $3,622. The age of the cases involved between 1990 and 2003. The oldest case was 1990, the newest case, 2003. So these are dealing with cases older than most of us have been here at the city of Guthrie. Discrepancies resolved to date, just under 2,300. There's about 1,300 that we're still working on. For all tints and purposes, it appears to be an issue of inadequate record-keeping or one document getting one place, but you're not dealing with a system that's fully integrated, so it has to get to other places. We think over the next few months, utilizing our internal records and records from DA's office on forfeitures, that we will be able to tie up the remaining loose ends on this Follow-up actions and items to be completed over the next 12 months, we will bring to the city council in the next 12 months, a Luxapo Policy 802 as modified to our particular needs entitled Property and Evidence Section. This policy provides guidelines for the proper processing, storage, security, disposition of evidence and other property. We'll be going through the appropriate process to dispose of property associated with inactive cases where property is no longer needed for evidence or seized property subject to proper disposition. We're going to make sure that the alarm system on the property and evidence room is reactivated, and we install security cameras. We're going to install a touchpad entry log so that it records who goes in and out, and there will be a sign-in log. And then we'll set up a process for an annual audit going forward in the future to make sure that we're maintaining the inventory of the property in the evidence room. So I think, again, we've identified the situation. We have addressed it, and I think we're setting up standards for the future that maybe 10 years from now, city manager and police chief won't have to deal with it again. I'd be glad to address any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Looks like you did a good job on it, both of you, the chief and the city manager.
Anything else on the city manager report?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Any comments from city council? Councilman Long?
Sorry I interrupted your party, Jeff. That's all I got.
That's it. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, all of you. I mean, all of you are doing a great job. I think, I think it's outstanding.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
I just wanted to say thanks to staff for the hard work they do every day, and especially when they're given special things like this. And I do think that the council needs to consider requiring a majority of us to request some sort of review on something like this. I think we need to really put that on our scope of things to look at as well. And I'd subject that to a majority vote if you want. That's all I got.
Councilman Bercher?
Well, I'm going to echo. I know what C-Sat does. I know how many people are jerking, pulling at you, and it's hard sometimes, it's hard to get everything lined out in the way that, you know, I coached the softball team one time, and I couldn't make 10 guys happy at the same time. So I know what you guys are dealing with. You can't make everybody happy, but it takes a special person to want to come back to work every day and deal with the problems. So I want to thank you guys very much, and I want to thank the people at work for y'all that, that make y'all look good. So, thank you.
Councilman Channel?
Well, I mentioned this earlier. I came tonight trying to do what I feel like the people elected me to do. I brought it out. I exposed the problem, and this council elected not to do anything about it. So if you're watching this and you don't like that it wasn't handled, I guess you can take it up with them at the ballots.
Councilman Case?
I think I'll pass.
Just another comment about Red Brick Nights. I continue to get just laudatory comments from people from out of town that came here and others that have heard about it, about the whole thing, not just the fireworks, but the whole thing. So congratulations to, to everybody. I know there's a city's involved, and I know that there are lots of people, people James and, and others, that are diligently involved in it every month now for the next few months, and just really do a great, great job. It's a, it's a wonderful thing for, for our town. So congratulations and thank you for everybody involved. We still have some vacancies on some of our boards and commissions, forestry, the board of adjustment, the Guthrie Housing Authority, the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board, and the Convention and Visitors Board still are looking for some citizens that want to be more engaged and involved in your, in your community. So please consider those. Item number 15 is consider approval to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing some communication concerning some pending claims, as well as purchase appraisal of property for economic development.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll go first.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move into executive session.